I pledge allegiance to the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bunnock.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sodisillo.
Here.
Commissioner Elgar.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Al present.
Thank you. So that bring us to public comment. Please come forward.
I'm stuck in my mask. Lois Bailey, Village of Suttons Bay. I come with an easy request for you today. I'm asking for your endorsement letter for Tony Lenty, who is an applicant for the Mishta Executive Director. Tony has served with us on the Housing Action Committee, and he is the Traverse City Housing Director. So it would certainly be valuable to have him as a Executive Director in Lansing on this program for us. So I brought along the draft letter, or the copy of the letter that we sent from the Housing Action Committee, and I brought along Tony's resume for your review, and I hope you'll be able to get that letter on the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could use somebody in the Mishta office from Northern Michigan. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Am I actually on the agenda to speak or?
No, you're on the agenda.
Good morning. Victor Goldschmidt, Northport.
Good morning.
Why don't you meet more north than in the state? I, 114181, Catford Bay, Northport, Michigan. I'm trying to be serious, but I just rather be informal at times. But I, do you know the story about the drop and the rock? Drop, 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 drop. Finally, the rock breaks. I feel like that drop. I'm gonna keep on annoying you until it breaks. My miles in my little sedan will increase, but that's okay. My, my dream, you know it well, and there are three aspects that maybe we can try and start to work on. The whole issue of collaboration and commitment and celebration. How many times have, I'm in Paris. I finally want to say thank you to her. How many times have we thanked our support staff? What kind of attitude are we conveying even amongst ourselves? Why can't we celebrate things from our townships and our meetings here? Why can't we take celebrations of this here to our townships? How can we be more bubbly? I am annoyed that you're not representing the Democrats, you're not representing the Republicans, you're representing the people. And you and us, likewise, are not representing a party. You're representing the people. You should be mixed up. You should be being together, having times to break, have coffee together. How many know, how many know each other's family? How many know they want to you may be right now bothered and confused because a son-in-law is a bum or whatever? There are dynamics that we can have intentionally develop to such a point that this fantastic county will be the star of the state. And we got to start someplace. The other way out, picture that comes to mind. Don't ever forget the boxes, the image of the boxes, okay? The other image I want to give you is a gear, two gears. One is rough, worn out, but some credit built up. They don't function well. So then we come here with a little bit of file paper and oil, and they're lubricated and they work well. I would love to have a group of two or three of you, they were willing to meet together and develop a strategy for excellence. Yes, a strategy for excellence, an excellence for our county. The officers, the portal commissioners, all the directors, even the citizenry. If you feel motivated, we can probably do that. Just meet, meet for coffee, three or four of us. Announce it, please, because otherwise we are going to get in trouble. Just to start brainstorming and find out what we can do to be a county, a star county, by developing a strategy for excellence. I've done this with all the groups. I'm getting a little bit rusty because for 20 years, I just enjoyed the lake. By now, I think we should get to work, and I'm willing to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Sue Miller from Leland Township. And I wasn't expecting to speak today. I had different plans, but your decision on Tuesday changed my mind. And I'm afraid you've woken a sleeping giant here in terms of getting some comments and responses from the community. So, thank you, Mr. Goldschmidt, because he really laid the groundwork for what I have to say this morning. Before reiterating my support for the early childhood millage, I'd like to comment on the Board of Commissioners' decision-making. I think we can all acknowledge that our county is divided by political party preferences. This division, as evidenced in recent countywide and township voting results, appears to be evenly divided, with the Board of Commissioners' election being decided by two votes. Therefore, I'd like you, our Board of Commissioners, to bear in mind that when you make decisions with your divided votes, you do not have a voter mandate. You are representing an evenly divided constituency, and this makes the process of decision-making particularly important. Your constituents expect each of you to seek and study credible background information on the issues that come before you. Most of your constituents expect you to rise above partisan politics and preconceived opinions, and with an open mind, respectfully consider all points of view. When your constituents seek consistent four-to-three votes on major issues of importance, such as prayer and public meetings, a major reorganization of county government, a school mask mandate, and now the gutting of a voter-supported millage, they can only conclude that there was little attempt to find common ground, compromise, or solutions that might satisfy most of them. There have been many missed opportunities to bring the community together on every one of these issues. The result of these missed opportunities is increased divisiveness. The community never benefits when board decisions are perceived in terms of winning and losing, alienating half the county with each four-to-three vote. As for the early childhood millage, I can only hope you'll reconsider your decision to defund these voter-supported services, and that in doing so, you'll seek out and study both the evidence of need and the results from early implementation. While service implementation initially looked different due to COVID, in-person services are now reaching parents and their children. I encourage you to look at the gaps identified, and recommendations made by the county's 42-member Early Childhood Advisory Group. Consider the millage-funded services that are now filling these gaps, and talk with the providers, and most of all, the clients of these services. One word that has been used to criticize early childhood services is redundancy, implying that they're a duplication of existing services. As a member of the Mental Health Advisory Work Group created to provide oversight of this millage-related program, I can refute the assumption of redundancy in mental health services. As commissioners, are you aware of the scarcity of mental health services in our county? Do you know anybody who has tried unsuccessfully to access services for themselves or someone they love? And what are the results for that person and his or her family? I personally talked with clients seeking mental health services and providers who can't serve them due to full caseloads. Thanks to the millage, both parents and young children with mild to moderate mental health problems, often referred by medical personnel, can now receive support through parenting communities while they wait the five to six months currently needed to access a mental health council.
You have to conclude, ma'am. Five minutes are up.
Okay. I think that what I'm asking you to do is really look at the facts here, and please don't go on preconceived notions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would you send that to the clerk as public comment?
I will.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Norma Verhey, and I'm from Leland Rock Township. This is the first time I've ever done such a thing, so excuse my nervousness, please. I've come out of my shell because I'm so concerned and saddened by the budget vote on Tuesday, which cut the millage for early childhood programs to nothing, a program the residents of this county specifically voted for. History judges a society for many things, such as education, wealth, and power. I believe that God judges us for our concern and care for the most vulnerable. Children are undoubtedly among that group, and this early childhood program focuses on even the most vulnerable among them, with personalized home visits, playgroups, referrals, and education. I want to stand today on the side of supporting them and their families. I want to show I prize their worth. They should not need to beg for our help. Our help should be glad and enthusiastic. My husband is somewhat disabled and not able to be with me today, but he prayed for me with his hands on my head as I come, in his name as well. We are the parents of five, and grandparents, busy grandparenting now, and I personally know firsthand how programs such as playgroups and education events help build my confidence as a parent, help make me wise, and increase the happiness of our family. Later, as my children grew up, I volunteered for many years as a helper and facilitator of such groups in my neighborhood and church. I served in my church on the board of monthly seminars for women in my whole city. I was a nursery caregiver for 21 years for a large women's Bible study program, and I witnessed there that same blossoming that I myself had experienced and look back and cherish. I was a stay-at-home mom, so I was, had that privilege of time and support from my husband to be involved in all of those things. Leland Rock County is famous for its pristine beauty and abundant agriculture. I would love to see it as a model of support for families and the highest level of nurture for its children. Please restore that levy for early childhood programs, and I thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda. The discussion item number one is the draft budget book, I think, and are you ready for that?
Yeah. We left off at special funds, Fund 542, which is building safety.
Was it page 59?
You probably beat me to there, but yeah. Yep, 59 of your new pink sheet. So with the implementation of purchasing the two vehicles, on the very first line item is fund balance forward on page 59, and that includes a little bit to balance the budget, as well as then the car purchase. And if they're, oh, go ahead. Their fund balance, correct? Yes, that is correct. Yeah, I know. Pink sheets. That's okay. So Amber goes through, and she presents a budget to you with her building permit, electrical and mechanical, right down the line of the fees that she plans or anticipates taking in in 2022. And then from there, we have our expenses at the bottom, starting with overtime, salaries, office assistant, and non-merch holiday. So how do they generally accrue holiday? I mean, overtime. In her office, it varies. I know Chet could probably make mention of that, too. A lot of times, the inspectors are working 79 hours. They're 70-hour employees, but a lot of times, it's 79 to 80. And then their office is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so they swing shift, and if they can't swing, then that's an hour of overtime for whoever's there to stay or to open. So generally, the secretary of staff may have 73 hours every two weeks, 74 hours every two weeks, and then depending on the workload of the inspectors, a lot of them are working either 7:30 to 3:30, or 7:30 to 4:30. Yep, with the workload.
So it's not time and a half, but it is overtime?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yep. When we started with that report of the overtime, it is, yep. It is at regular straight up till 40.
Can somebody keep up with all the requests?
Yeah.
Without crossing overtime situation?
Right, and they're open 40 hours a week, so that it does, it's got to create those situations.
Because remember, the office used to be open 8:00 to 4:00 with concerns that, really, for a contractor, he got to be here by 3:30, and it just messed up their day, so we altered the schedules, and the three support staff people, and they rolled it. Some offices open every day from 8:00 to 4:00, or 8:00 to 5:00.
Right, and it used to close from 12:00 to 1:00, too.
Yeah. We don't close offices.
Which was a real problem.
Right, yeah.
So we don't close at all. Thank you for bringing that up.
So they stagger their lunch hours with support staff, and, yeah.
They stagger them.
Many times, I was frustrated.
Yes.
So on page 60 of 78, those first few lines are going to be your employee costs, and then from there on down are going to be costs related to office and operating and gas and oil. She did keep that the same. It's tracking the same as, maybe a little bit higher than 2020 audited, but it's kind of in the same there. Repair and maintenance is typically for vehicles. She does have an attorney fee budget that she hadn't had in the past and has done now. There is a legal case with the Leland Rock Township property owner, and so those bills are still coming in.
There's no way that we can have him pay for that? I mean, it just isn't, is there?
No, the court somehow ruled that. It's a frustrating situation. Hopefully, that's coming to an end.
We've said that many times.
We've been hoping that for years. Hopefully, the legal process will end.
Excuse me. On page 59, she has plugged in a dollar amount for temporary office assistance. Does she currently have enough staff in that department?
Yes, I believe. I did not come back to Amber after this was presented, because they are at full staff. They were at full staff at the end of May, when Lynn Herman transferred from the clerk's office into the inspector. So she probably could drop that down. If we leave it in there, and then next year, she allocates it, that balance, if it's to be spent, would be there in the fund balance forward. So all I would be adjusting is that number, and then the fund balance forward, but I can certainly check with her before the end date.
At this point, we don't anticipate using it. However, with people's vacation or any illnesses or so forth, we had a couple of people with health issues this past year, and so we want to just be prepared in the event that happens.
Do you know how much they have as a contingency fund?
Oh, you mean like fund balance?
Yeah. I didn't see that, because it says...
It's probably in my other...
Because we're trying to get them to the point of one year?
Yeah. It's a significant fund balance, but you have to remember that in the worst-case scenario, if there's a tremendous downside in the economy and building, all those outstanding permits still have to be dealt with. And so therefore, it's very prudent to have a large fund balance in the likely event that happened in 2008 or '09. They did not have a large fund balance, and it caused major financial concerns for the county, because the inspectors were laid off with all these permits, and we still had to do inspections, and there was no money coming in. And that's why it is highly recommended they have almost a year surplus.
I think our records, when we got them at our meeting, Will, I think they were close to that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I did.
So people may say, "A large fund balance," and say, "Well, why do you have to large fund balance?" Well, it's for that event.
For that reason. Yeah, it was supposed to be one year to try to get what they're...
Ron was kind enough to put on this computer for me, that I can access my Harris, my general ledger here at the desk, which is very kind. And so I will give you that number in just one minute.
Okay. Yeah.
In the meantime, what is, what's contractual services? I know back, back when it was the actual inspectors, but what is it in there for today?
Now, it was a professional change with administration a couple of times ago, that any purchases that were by the construction code were their expenses. So she actually, on our Netlink copiers, is paying for that instead of either duplicating fund. So she pays for the printer or copier services there, but I can also give you a rundown of what that is here. Currently, as of August, which is not final, her fund balance is $931,600, excuse me, $967.
Say that again.
I'm sorry. 931, 967.
931,000.
Yes, sorry. 967.
So that's a year.
Yeah, that's easy.
So they're pretty good.
And then I can take a quick peek here, too, if you want, at what her contractual services are. I can run that real quick. Are there any other questions in there? Does anybody have?
So is the $49,000 you're going to roll?
Yes, I'm taking that from fund balance. In the event that her revenues do not come in over, you know, so if she has additional revenues, then that won't pull. If you do want to take a second and go to page 61, at the very bottom, underneath each column, that's the over and short for each year. So over in '18 of '77, over in '19 of '96, below in '20 at '35, and then currently holding through June at '5. Now, one of the things that we've discussed in the past is inspections. As always, it's a prepay, pay ahead, and then your services later. So sometimes these numbers will go up and down depending on when the permit is pulled, and then later when expenses are taken.
So at what point, then, if they have a super year in '22, we're not going to want it to go, you know, we're not, I wouldn't think we would want it to go more over a million, or what is our bright point? How do we roll that, you know, make sure we don't roll that too far forward?
Well, she's at 860 for her budgeted for 2022, so I would say by the time that you go to look at the 2023 budget, you'll have a number, a more firm number, because you have the cycles of building and non-building, you know, depending on the economy. So I would say with 900 right now through August, that she's good, and then I would say by June of next year, you would know if you were up over. Usually, it stays status quo. So even though there's a swing of '77, '96, then you're coming into that swing of '20, losing '35, not necessarily losing, but adjusting that balance down. And right now, through six months, she's only ahead $5,000.
So I guess then my question would be, at that point, we're, look at that, June's probably a good...
Yep, I would say the halfway mark.
Indicator, a lot of permits have been pulled by then, et cetera. So how would we make sure it doesn't go over, say, a million, if we think that's too much at that point?
Yeah, I've talked with Amber about that, and they're going to have to reduce the fees and the permits.
Permit fees is where we would control that.
She'll look at that, you know, and try to make it so that the balance is, try to keep it equal to what they need to take into the year and pay out.
Perfect.
And I know that Amber works a lot with us in accounting, as well as with Chet, monthly, following that track, because we don't want to have something, you know, fall off the other side or too much one way.
She monitors it very closely.
And we actually discussed this in the last meeting.
What I'm just saying aside, I'll just, if you look at last year, the revenue, you have to remember, we went almost two months with no revenue coming in. So the fact we ended up as well as we did is amazing. We were anticipating a significant hit. So the fact we ended up that close to breaking even last year truly is amazing.
Her contractual, Melinda, was that she has her Netlink solutions, so that's every quarter. Only the first quarter is like a preempt to the rest of the year. And then she also has the S&amp;A software that she pays her software fees through that line item of 801. So that's what's there so far this year. Thank you.
One thing we could have mentioned, I think you asked about the temporary. We put that in there because if we're busy, we've been talking about hiring a part-time inspector on a temporary basis. If someone's sick, out of surgery, they're behind, if we can get someone that's fully certified and wants to work part-time, they'd be a backup. We had one inspector that had two surgeries last year and was out for about three months total between the two, and we have a couple that are retired that may be interested or fully licensed, who couldn't maybe come in and sub a day or two.
That's about what it would cover, is a day or two occasionally.
Pardon?
That's all it would really cover, is a day or two occasionally.
But we just want to have that in there in the event, we don't need an hour, we're caught up, we're on target, but in that, that happens, that's why. She put one earlier, and I forgot to mention it. We talked about it in our committee meeting, and I forgot to bring that up.
So the unused portion would go back to her fund balance?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions on page 16, other than what those were contractual? Page 61 is the computer charges, and then the next is copy machine rental. So we do charge the fee of six cents a copy if it's for three cents and six cents, I believe. I'll have to double-check that now that I just said that. And that's for the paper, that we all share group paper in the basement, and Laurel or at for everybody. And then going down, you'll see the increase in the capital outlay. That's the vehicles that she requested. And then I believe that they're looking at a new printer. I'm not sure if they purchased it in '21, but she's rolling it to '22 if it doesn't get purchased. And then the last item is to come in from the cost allocation. So the $83,621 is transferred into the general fund, which is reflected in the general fund as income.
Okay. Back up.
Which number?
Say that one again.
The indirect cost at the very bottom.
Yeah, the indirect cost. So this is what we're charging her for?
Business-type activity.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, so we're going to, gotcha.
Yep. The next fund is 573 mapping services. At $2 a map, there isn't a lot of money that comes in, but there is a fund balance from previous years. So that is the majority of what I use here. I can look to see what the cash is in here as well. So basically, it's fund balance forward. Charges for services would be if there are maps and aerial maps as well, and then a transportation map, $600.002. That's the county map and that we charge $2 apiece. And then they have special requests that they charge for. And then the operating transfer in, that was only for last year's request, so that was removed and put to zero. And that was for the large project she has. And I will actually be hoping to come back to you here in September or October because she received a grant. So that 43 that was moved in, I will be moved back, some of that will be moved back. Instead of staying in there.
What are the membership dues for?
Membership dues, they have, I believe if I was to look, it's for.
I'm just wondering why it doubled, or two and a half times.
Membership dues, oh, from $200 to $500? I'm not sure why her request, why she changed that. I could ask her. She changed it in '20, excuse me, in '21, so it rolled that way. If I can look to see what vendor that is.
When you say she rolled it, are you talking about?
Trudy. Sorry, this is Trudy's budget. And if they don't make a change, when they submit that back to us, we leave it as the previous year until it's reviewed.
I think she's backed up to full staff now, right?
Yes.
The last year, so maybe it's just a number of employees, maybe?
No, what I show is actually a prepay expense from 2020 for the $225 so far. So it's something that's billed in October, November for next year. So it's possible, I can look into that for her as to what the change was, but she's, even in this case, it's $225. Same with travel. I don't know, in the last few years, she hasn't had anything there. So we could certainly, I can certainly ask Trudy then at the next meeting, let you know what those answers are.
And both things.
The travel could be a new employee too.
It looks like in 2015 is the last time that it was used for actual education and that was a seminar at Boeing is what it tells me here. And then '19 was travel reimbursement, so a mapping meeting of some sort or education that she did travel for. So, but I can ask her if she'd like to drop that down. Here in this fund, it's same thing. What's in there is to be spent and what's not rolls into this and stays in there. So I can flag that. The next fund is 631 maintenance department. This would be Jerry's budget. I do use fund balance forward as well as the charges for services. Charges for services are reflected within the departments.
Why do we do a fund balance forward with this one?
Typically, I will do the $678,000 and then if it falls under in expenses, a lot of times I'll see that in the contractual or in the utilities.
Oh, I see, so those we can, those utilities obviously fluctuate. Fluctuate in contractual might be something that just comes up and we'll say we're going to take that. Jerry's budget, so who did he budget?
In Jerry's budget, he does, we try and keep up with the past, I would say. You know, the audited or previous numbers. And so when I say that we're going to dip in, let's say $78,020, we only dipped in 30.
Okay.
Yep. And so I don't have my, I didn't bring my fund balance totals with me, but I did run them for June. So he has a healthy budget. And in using his fund balance, then I'm keeping the maintenance departments and the way it rolls with the cost allocation more level, instead of seeing a high and a real low and a high and a low. Someone just recently told me it's the whiplash effect, which I hadn't thought of. So taking it, giving it, taking it, giving it. And so I'm just trying to keep it as a steady stream. So I use fund balance if there's something in there. This is the, we want to start at the top again. So fund balance forward, charges for services. And then you'll have the staff, two full-time, one at 50%. The other 50% is in parks and rec. And so then after the operating and office supplies, we do bill those according to the campus. So 727 operating is going to be for the government center. And operating office for the LEC is going to be the other side of the parking lot with the law enforcement. So we separate those for tracking. Postage, uniforms, he does have a uniform allowance. And then gas and oil for the vehicles. So you can see like on that very last line item, 743, he budgeted six. The most he's ever had is five, last year was three. So that's three to the good in the essence there that was used from, stays in the fund. Repairing maintenance is separated again as well as contractual services. So depending on what they're purchasing or the services provided, that's there. The cleaning of both units, both, the whole campus is under 801, 002. And we have lawn maintenance at 003. Membership and dues, like questions we just had, is water quality, those types of things for campus. Telephone, cellphone. Travel is typically at a minimal, so that doesn't have a very large budget or printing and publishing. And then you get into utilities.
And Jen, how is that sorted? The 001 account, the 000 account, one's for the jail and one's for this building?
Yes, so always the 000 will be for the government center and 001 will be for the LEC.
Oh, that's why it's so high. That was going to be my question.
Yep.
Whoa.
Yep.
And why are those, why are those under this budget?
The utilities?
Oh, no, I thought you were, oh, I was thinking 001, cell phones.
Oh, cellphone.
Why are you having $1,500?
The, all three positions have cell phones, the maintenance. They actually have desk phones as well, but a lot of times if you want them, you call their cellphone. Yep, so we carry three there.
That seems like a lot for three cell phones.
I think it runs 40, I want to say it's $47 a month for each one, maybe? Or like it's a plan where the first one is. Yep, so it's $47 a cellphone.
They're a part of that deal? They're a part of that deal and we're still paying that much?
Well, we pay that for, I mean, the smartphone wasn't that.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually $80.
Yeah, yes.
For one.
I think they're all unlimited.
Yes.
Sure, yeah, so is mine, but it's under this.
Yeah. We get a package deal.
Wow.
And we get this government rate.
Yeah.
But it's essential at the helm.
I do agree, we found that out with our situation a year ago.
That's a great example.
Exactly, I'm not arguing about it, just it tied to me for only three, four years.
And, okay. The only adjustment that I can see that may have to happen, which would be in 2023, is under rental. So the rental corresponds with the mileage vehicle and so would Jerry's treasure truck being replaced. That might, treasure truck might stay under that $4,000. And then, so when we come down, I do not, he does not have anything, that's a capital request. If he did, I put it in the 470, which we had already gone past, which is capital improvements here versus building and ground.
Which we, I just was speaking with him yesterday because I had noticed especially in clerk's office, our highest traffic office, carpet wear.
Yeah.
And so he's going to be looking at some different flooring throughout this warehouse already. I say already because it seems like we just moved in, but.
But we didn't.
But we didn't.
And the next fund, page 66 of 78, is the data processing fund. I did not use fund balance forward for Ron. I did charges for services. So that's where you'll see that large increase of the 428 to the 555617. So his total budget has been cost allocated back to each department that has computers. You'll see the first-line items are all salary-based. In the event that there is any staffing level change that will be or could be adjusted. Anything that is not spent in 2022 will roll back into fund balance.
And then contractual services is obviously that.
Safety net.
Safety net, yep.
There's other ones in there too, just like with inspections, the SNA. Any software costs, all are allocated, are paid through his fund and then allocated back. So if you were wanting to on a rainy day, look at his supplemental, you can see the allocations for each department. He too has a telephone, he does not have the cellphone, that's his. He has minimal copy, but we put a balance there, his buildings and grounds. The 967018 is no longer in use, that was the virus of 2018. And we had separated that off for the expenses that we had. He will have a depreciation line each time for each purchase over $5,000. And then his capital outlay and capital outlay under five are in the descriptions of supplemental and I believe he had come before you to talk about those. Any questions with Ron's budget?
Well, all, you know, when you say this capital outlay, or I mean, when you talked about the 967018, so all the computers that were purchased through that are not on his budget. Where, does that go to every individual budget then?
No, so that, so then under the 97010, the capital under $5,000, that's where your $48,500 are your individual computers, because the item is under two.
All right, thank you.
The next budget, 68 of 78, is the duplicating fund at 645. This one, I am using fund balance forward to balance as well. This is the charges for services at 23. I had previously had it at 18.5 and you can see the history was more than that. So that's why I'm dipping into that. The transfer in the past was for purchases that we hadn't allocated and machines died or were on their last leg. So our office and operating is a large pool of paper, it's located in the basement. Contractual services is for the copiers that we purchase. It's an annual maintenance renewal. Depreciation is charged. And then we leave in here for 23, or for 22 in the event they're on, if another one is on a last lay. One thing we probably will need to work on in the future is an estimate of all of the copiers and have a list as to, and a replacement schedule.
But isn't that pretty much dependent on use?
Yes, yes, yeah. Page 69 of 78 is the mailing department fund. We have metered mail here that we do, so we charge a percentage for that to each department back for the use of the postage machine. And then you'll have your office and your postage and your contractual service. There's a maintenance agreement and also a lease agreement. Page 70 of 78, our wonderful telephone system, page is Fund 656. When we first moved into this, when we first moved into this building, we weren't sure of the cost of all the phones and lines and such. And so we're able to still use fund balance forward from those first years in 2008. And so we have a charge for services and we're using fund balance forward. It's a great system, we hardly have any repairs. So you can see, even though we have repair and maintenance and contractual, we don't generally hit those limits. Sometimes if a telephone line does go out of contract, we rein it back in and try and get it back. You can see at one year it was 24 and then 21 and its history is under telephone. If there are purchases, or their large purchase, when we first moved in here, is still being depreciated. So there's a budget for that. And if Ron needs to purchase any new phones or technology, that comes out of there under capital outlay. A lot of us like having the Bluetooth so that we don't have to have the, or like in the clerk's office, you'll see we will be walking around with it, it's cordless, which is super nice. Page 71 of 78 is the motor pool. So here with the rental charges that are within the departments, we have fund balance forward being used, leased income, sale of fixed assets. And then in the previous, you can see the next line is the marine, which is the boat, so that was placed in here. And that is being held separate, in a separate cash line for boat, for marine. That was something we had done prior, even with prior administration. So that's that. And then the depreciation is expended as well as the capital outlay. So as of right now, there's 123 that was expended in the cars that were purchased. If and when Jerry's vehicle is purchased, we will come back to you with an amendment for this budget. First, you'll do your regular executive to approve the purchase and then I'll come back with an amendment. The next fund is page 72 of 78, is the insurance fund. So this is a pink sheet in reference to any changes that were done with the board's approval for the upcoming adoption. So we are self-funded. Currently, we range between 99 to 100 individuals covered. And so we're charged under the expenses of the fees associated with that stop loss and then anything that is left over goes to insurance. We do per contract and policy pay for a hospitalization buyout. So there's a set amount that we record in here as an expense that goes back to the employee. And as Chet mentioned at the last budget, Lou states that our numbers are looking good for this year.
Yeah, we are right on target. Actually a little bit under, a little bit, you know, type of change, but we're optimistic. There is a credit to our employees. You know, we do seminars every year to inform them that really the cost, the way we would do it is because of their cooperation and they've been very supportive.
But your date looks high, is that just because a payment just came in, we just made like a third?
Yeah, so in this, in this fund, it is cost allocated. So we put the money in in January and then we put the money again in April and then the next payment would be July. So right there, when you see the minus 174, you're using fund balance to get you to that July 1st. Yep. And we have our policy that's been written since, I believe my book is from 1978 with Blue Cross? Yes, and it still applies, all those guidelines and rules still stay the same. Our open enrollment is February. So for us, we go through January and those expenses then are calculated. And then brand new, our stop loss starts in February. So the $20,000 drops off in January and in February, that first billion you're hit with all, so you're upfronting at February, March, April, and then seeing that slow as it goes through the rest of the year.
But that's just on that individual, right?
That individual.
The stop loss?
Yes. Yes. It's, it's per, it's per enrollee or subscriber, so it'd be a family.
All family.
It's a family 20,000. Yep. And they have tried to change that with us. Chet will tell you that there have been meetings, and I know that people like to think I'm firm, I'm very firm with keeping that 20,000, so.
Absolutely.
I'd say super.
Super firm.
Another.
I may have scared the individual. As I said, we wouldn't be able to afford it if you upped it to 30,000 or 40,000, our stop loss.
Right.
We would be more beneficial to go back and be like the rest of the world, and if you up it, then you get more use, you know, people, it's more use.
That's right.
So.
You get the employee buy-in like you said.
Yeah. Thank you for being super firm, thank you.
We have to have a little, I'll come, I'll call it come to Jesus meeting every year where insurance reps, because they try to give us all the great benefits and reasons why we should switch.
Right.
We're firm.
We're firm.
Okay.
Firm for now. Pages 73, 74, 75, and 76 are all of those GASP changes I talked about when I first gave you the book, the In Your Table of Contents, those are, you'll see those as new. It's an entry I do on December 31st and then reverse on 1-1 for the audit. So the next page is going to be your page 77, which is your DAM fund, it's listed under special assessment, and we have balanced that according to your changes. So 29 will be transferred from the general fund for allocations of 29,000 in expenses. And that is your budget book.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Are we doing anything on staffing?
I mean, as far as staffing levels?
I just wanted to bring your attentions for moving forward on the finance.
Yeah, that's our, I mean, you got a clerk there, what about the stipend of 3,900?
They'll be at the October meeting.
Okay. That will be adjusted then?
Yeah.
That's, but they'll be on the November 1st.
Okay.
Though, there's a formal process you have to do to create those apartments, everything. So I'm actually talking to our, they'll be on the October agenda, when you do the budget reports, those two will be motions.
Oh, no, I think that, Rick, are you talking about the 3,900 for non-mandated services? Is that what you mean on the clerk's staffing level?
We pay a stipend.
You do, and I believe the motion says for non-mandated?
Yeah, we will deal with that after October. You'll have it, Jim.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah. Which is part of the whole, it'll be separate, they'll be part of that meeting in October to do about it.
Okay.
But they'll be separate, the motion required.
All right.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
Anyone else, any other questions?
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Jim, for all your work.
Yes.
You know, those, like those pink sheets, they don't happen automatically, I was here this weekend.
Yeah.
Because that budget meeting was on Thursday, and then one Tuesday, so thank you, Jim, for coming.
You're welcome.
Very nice. We appreciate it. That then, that would then bring us to continuation review of the draft budget rules.
Yeah, we're not recommending changes to military.
I don't think that there's.
They're pretty much the same for budget rules.
All right. Commissioner West.
At some point, I'd like to have a discussion about anonymous donations. We have had conversations at this table, and just to make sure that when anonymous donations are made, we want to clarify that there are no conditions, no services are being delivered, and I don't think our current budget book rules adequately cover that.
And typically, there are no anonymous donations. We cannot guarantee that. If someone wishes to foil a name, we have to give them that information. So when people say it's anonymous, we don't publicize it, but those donors, I always make them aware that typically, if there's a FOIA request, we have to provide the name, we cannot accept anonymous donations.
So like that recent, you know, somebody wanted to.
We would have to give the name for any, any type of financial donation that comes in. If they wish to name anonymous, we say we try to honor that, but however, it is public documents and it is public information.
I, I, thank you. I'm also talking about if people make a donation and there's associated cost with it in terms of services we might provide.
Yeah, as you know, you, well, you probably forgot, several years ago, we had, we modified our policy on that, that you have the right to accept, reject any donation, and there cannot be any strings attached unless it's approved by the Board of Commissioners, that's a separate policy, so you are protected there. And that's why you have to get board approval for anything over 500, because in theory, you may not wish to accept a donation, or a service of goods, or a material donation.
Right. Well, I'm not suggesting it's been a problem, I just think that's something that we need to.
But we do have a checking balance system in place. Once again, there are no, typically, there are no anonymous donations.
Any other questions, comments? And thank you for that, Commissioner West, that was, that's good. It's good to know. All right, so then we move on to early childhood. Sorry for the delay, but.
No problem at all.
Thank you for being.
Sure. You guys are going to get sick of seeing me over the next few days, I think, but, so, yeah, yesterday I just.
I'm sorry, let me just for record, identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Michelle Klein, I'm the personal health director at the Benzy Leland Health Department, sorry about that. Yeah, so yesterday, I just put together a quick summary of parenting communities, and I want to start by, I know there was some discussion about, you know, what do we call this? Is it, is it early childhood care, is it early childhood development? I would suggest that neither of those terms really fit, they're pretty narrow, this really is about early childhood health and wellbeing. And parenting communities is the name we've given this initiative, it kind of encompasses everything we're doing for our young parents and kids in our community. So I do have on the sheet, you know, our vision of thriving children and families and our mission, that's a comprehensive responsive system of opportunities for our families and children. And there's some key values that we established, and this was, this is put together by a group of folks in our community that are serving our families as well as parents. And so, you know, we know that the earlier we can support our families, the better the outcomes go, financially, physically, mentally, socially, universal access, and by that, what we mean is every parent and every child in this community is part of this community and should have the opportunity to access the services that we're providing to the level that they need them. Which goes down to the family-focused piece of this. This isn't a canned initiative that says, if you're going to be a part of parenting communities, you have to have 10 home visits over the first year of life, that's not what this is about. This is truly about what is the family need to be supported? And that could be, you know, just an opportunity to connect with other parents, or it could be really long-lasting interactions with, with mental health providers. So there's a whole continuum of supports that we have available. Parents are the leaders, we want their input in everything we do to make sure we're meeting the needs. We do want to use evidence-informed strategies so that, and we do collect data as well to make sure that we're hitting the targets that we want to hit. And then collaboration is key, there's a lot of, you know, and I know there've been discussions, there are many services for our families in this community, and so we don't want to duplicate, but we want to collaborate and make sure we're creating the seamless system. And underlying all of this is the framework of the five protective factors, and those are all listed here, I'm not going to read them to you, you can all read them yourselves, but those five protective factors, what we know is that when those protective factors are, are part of our community and part of our individual families, and then even as individuals ourselves, you're much more likely to thrive. These, these are the kids that will, the stronger these factors are in their lives, the more likely they are to be ready for school, the more likely they are to graduate, to be economically self-sufficient as adults, less likely to get involved with substances and with the court systems. This is just, you know, these are long, long-lasting impacts. So, but what parenting communities is not, it's not daycare, it's not childcare, it's not preschool. We, of course, advocate for quality daycare and quality preschools, but we don't fund those and we don't run those. It's not school-based educational services. We partner with our schools, they've been awesome, they, you know, allow us to use their facilities for playgroups. Glen Lake School is providing some office space for one of our workers, she's not a part of their staff, but they're just giving her a place to be that's in the community she primarily serves. We don't duplicate services, again, we partner with other agencies, we don't do the same thing. A couple examples of that I can give you is, is the 521 Great Start Collaborative runs a playgroup in Grelickville at the, well, at the park and then at the, at the museum down there twice a month. So parenting communities is running at the other two weeks of the month, so we're partnering with them, but we're not going to do the same thing they're doing. Let's see, we don't provide services for funding for basic needs, so we're not paying for people's housing and their food with these funds. What we do do, though, is we help connect families to resources and navigate what sometimes is a really confusing system in order to access those resources. So on page two, I talked about some of our activities, and I know I was just here last month, and we had this discussion, you know, about the delays and the challenges that we've all experienced through COVID. So we really didn't get a chance to start digging in and doing what we wanted to do until the middle of June. Prior to that time, though, we spent a lot of time, our staff, just reaching out to families that we could connect with and calling them on the phone, and what can we do to help you? However, so, so some of the core functions are the home visits, and home visits are, you know, this is a team effort, and again, it's very family-centered. We have community health workers, we have nurses, we have dieticians, we have social workers, that all can work together to go out and serve families in whatever way they want. And fam, home visits are certainly, they're completely voluntary, and it is entirely up to the family what they need. So, you know, as I was talking to Gwen just a few minutes ago earlier, we spend, you know, we do a lot of visits with moms who are breastfeeding in those first couple of weeks of lives, and it makes the difference between continuing to breastfeed and quitting. So that's a really important support. There are other families that have somebody in their home helping them weekly and really mentoring them and working side by side as they struggle to become economically self-sufficient or to manage, you know, really challenging mental health issues or behaviors with their kids. So home visiting is really impactful, and you can see when I was here last time, at the end of July, we were serving 18 families for home visits, so since that time, that's gone up to 38 families. So 38 families have received 174 home visits in 2021, and I think that's tremendous growth in a short period of time. And what that is, as somebody who's worked for, you know, decades really, in this community, working with these families and doing home visits, this says a lot about our staff. It takes so much for a family to trust and let somebody into their home into the most, you know, private parts of our lives that happen behind closed doors, and so the fact that it's growing tells me that the word is spreading that these are good people. And then the playgroups, and playgroups, again, that's, that's a, that's a term that we use, but it's, it's really not, it's, again, it's not daycare, it's not parents dropping their kids off, and it's really not just playing either. This is parents connecting with each other, these are facilitated, there's somebody there that has expertise in child development and helps the parents make connections, can observe the kids, and if there's a developmental issue that they're thinking, huh, I wonder what's going on with that, they can offer to do a further assessment. There's a lot of information provided about nutrition and about managing parenting stress and about, you know, behaviors, and it's, it's the parents, the peer-to-peer mentoring as well as having that person who's an expert in child development, and bringing in other resources as well. We can have someone go in and talk about oral health care or about immunizations during these groups. So we've had 34 playgroups that we've held in five different locations, it's been important to us that we're, you know, really trying to be in different areas of the community. We all know transportation is an issue in our large geographic area. And so, you know, in those groups, there've been 119 adults, 250 kids that have participated, and unduplicated, when I went back to count, it's 64 unduplicated families that have participated in our playgroups, and many of them, they do, they go back again and again and again because they value this. The community-based family events, we've only had the opportunity to do one, it was initially scheduled in August, and then we had storms that night, had to reschedule for September 1st. That was held at Herman Park in Sutton's Bay, and we had Miriam Pico there, and I wish you all could have seen this, it was so fun, and seeing all of these parents and their kids outside and they're dancing and connecting with each other, it was just, just a very positive experience. And this was also a great outreach opportunity for parenting communities in general, so we can share more information about playgroups and home visits and calling us if there's any needs in their families. And then Mom Power, so Mom Power is a group we started, yesterday was the first day, this is an incredibly impactful mental health, a mental health, I don't want to say treatment program, but it kind of is in a way. It's evidence-based, it comes out of the University of Michigan Department of Psychiatry, been around for quite a few years now, and it encompasses, it's three home visits and then 10 group sessions, moms and kids come, and it's, it's very involved, and at some point, I'd love to come, you know, when we're done with this group and, and share more about this. But the impact is tremendous. I know in previous groups, a couple stories that stick in my mind is, you know, one mom that this participation in this group, this was what gave her the strike to seek substance abuse treatment, that she would not have done otherwise. And there was another mom that was able to put things in place to manage a domestic violence situation she's been in with, in for nine years. And so, you know, and it, it's, it's, I just can't even, I can't put into words how great this, this Mom Power group is for these moms. And what parenting communities does with this, in addition to being able to support the, you know, the cost of Mom Power, is, this is a 10-week program, and when we've had these in the past through grant that might pay for just the program, there's such a sense of disappointment because these moms really connect with each other and with the licensed mental health professionals, professionals, and then it's done, and that's it. And now we have the opportunity for the social worker to continue to check in with those families and make sure they're okay and keep them on that path towards mental health that they've been on. And it also is an opportunity to bring those moms together with their kids more informally to support each other, because they do, there's a lot of bonding that happens, it's a very personal, you know, they, they share their personal stories, and so it's, it's, I can't say enough about it, that's all I can say. So, anyway, so we had nine moms enrolled, 14 children, and then we had to form a waiting list because we just couldn't accommodate anymore. And we'd really like to hold another group in 2022. So the next section, we had started in September, we started doing just, well, essentially satisfaction surveys, just checking in with the families who participated to see if we were meeting their needs. This is still in progress, since we're not at the end of the month yet, but I just wanted to share what we know so far. So 100% have, agree or strongly agree that parenting communities helps them feel less isolated. 100% agree or strongly agree that parenting communities helps them learn about resources and support. 80% agree or strongly agree that parenting communities helps them navigate ups and downs of life. 90% agree or strongly agree that being involved gives them more confidence in managing their children's behavior. And 90% agree or strongly agree that parenting communities helps them be a better parent or caregiver. And then below that are some of the, the, just the free statements that families have shared on this survey. You know, whenever I had questions about breastfeeding, I always had someone to confide in, it was a huge help. And this, these were, the question was, what do you find most helpful about parenting communities? And watching my child interact and play with kids his age as a parent, I mean, new parents. Holly's consistent presence, Holly, by the way, is one of our community health workers, and she's awesome. Her consistent presence at playgroups, and her proactiveness in welcoming people and making introductions, the weekly relationships continue to build, it's meaningful, and I also appreciate Holly's recommendations. Feedback from the home visits was helpful. I love the playgroups and family events, it gives us something interactive to do with the kids. Getting together with parents and going through the same things or talking with the coordinator for ideas, I mean, you can read the rest of them, I won't read them all aloud to you, but, but, you know, it's, these are the stories of our parents in our community that are participating and how they feel about what we're funding here. And then below that is just a quick summary of what our costs. So, so far, well, through August 15th, we, the cost had been 182,792.35. And again, this is underestimated from what we initially budgeted because of COVID and the inability to grow the program and do all the in-person activities we wanted to. So we are estimating now that now through December 31st, it will be approximately $150,000, and that's two quarters, the quarter we're in, and then the final quarter of the year. For next year, our estimated budget, which I shared last time, was 708,000 is the cost for us to do what we want to do. So, you know, not funding this program, first of all, to, all this wonderful work we're doing right now will just end. So, um, you know, not funding this program, first of all, to, all this wonderful work we're doing right now will just end. And that would be just a shame to see and a disappointment to our families. We also, you know, we can't grow. I mean, our numbers are growing all the time. Families are connecting with us. They're telling their friends. Um, and we really don't want to reach a point, our staff right now, they're maxed out. And what we don't want to do is to tell families, sorry, we have no room. That's just, this is not really philosophically what we want to do with our, with our, um, programs here. Um, you know, and other, and also just thinking about, from a practical standpoint, these, our staff, they are members of this community. They are parents. Their kids go to school here. They have family that work here. I mean, these, these are, you know, this is not something that's coming from a bureaucrat in Washington. We are all part of our community and our hearts are in this community and our staff's hearts are. And I wish I could express to you, um, how much our staff care for the families that they work with. So, you know, their implications, we certainly don't want to have to lay off the staff we have. In fact, we were planning on, uh, this week, we were doing interviews to add an additional community health worker to the program, which I postponed at this point, which was part of what we had budgeted even initially. We planned on growing the staff because we knew more families would get involved. So, um, and the last thing I want to share, I don't know how many of you know Woody Smith. Um, I know he will be writing a letter, but Woody has been involved. He works for Avenue ISR and he is extremely knowledgeable in evaluation and assessment and has been involved in many, many, many organizations in northern Michigan for many, many years. So we are using him to support our evaluation of this program so we can provide, you know, some really good data on return on investment. Um, we haven't been doing this long enough to have great data for you at this point, but I can tell you, you know, they, he, he led a study in Northwest Lower Michigan. Um, this was a while ago, it was 2010, but at that time, this kind of work that we're doing, the return on investment was six to one, uh, which is, you know, that's a good bang for your buck. So that's where we are. This is important work and, you know, this is the stuff when we, when we can support these families, when they're at their youngest age, with these kids, um, we have, there are financial benefits that will last the rest of those children's lives. I mean, so that impacts our community as a whole. So. So what questions can I answer?
Hi Gwen, Quickwin.
Sure.
You said you were going to, you were interviewing for one more.
Community health worker, certified community health.
So you've already got three full-time.
No, no, no. This was, this is what's projected for next year. So this would be, right now we have two community health workers. So we would be adding one more.
So you have three written down here.
This, this, this was the budget for 2022.
Which would have been five and a half employees. So that one you were interviewing was one of these.
Would be, would be one of those three. Yes.
So you would, you would have five and a half employees for next year for just this program?
Uh, we have three community health workers, a social worker, and not all full-time, part-time supervisor.
Well, I see three full-time community health workers, one full-time social worker.
Yes, you are correct.
One county coordinator in a half-time position. That's, that's five and a half.
Yep, and a very part-time biller.
And then the billers.
And the billers, you know, minimal time, but important because that will bring in revenue that will help.
Still larger than some of our departments in this courthouse.
You know, it is not, it, it's time-consuming work. I mean, it, it just truly is. So, um, it's important work.
Rick, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, thanks. Thanks for your work. Kids should be number one. Um, on the budget, I think making work for you, but we just went through this book here. And then you give us this here by Monday. I won't be here at Monday's meeting, but is it possible for you to give this budget a breakdown? I mean, I want to know, you know, what are you spending on marketing? What are you spending on training? Mom Power. I want to know what each employee, I want to break down everything, just like the book is.
We can do that, yeah.
We are responsible for this money that we're allocating.
And that's what we do when we, when we define our budget.
But I think if we put out some fires, if we could just see where the money's going. Because that's what I'm hearing on the street. I'm hearing, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's a Democrat or Republican. I am hearing a lot of flack about this. I wasn't around as a commissioner. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but for me to put out fires, I need facts.
Right. That we can, I can absolutely have that ready for you on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I, I want, we talked with, um, David Stoker, our legal counsel, um, yesterday. And, and he, uh, according to him legally, um, the commission, it is the duty of the commission to set the, the, um, the millages. So legally, what, what we're doing has been verified by him as legal. And, and that's the purpose that it's brought before this board. If a program is no longer wanted or needed or excessive in cost or whatever, the, the, the board has the right to reduce it or eliminate it or, or whatever. He gave, the example he gave is not quite the same as this. He gave, um, tent worms as an example where they voted in a millage for tent worms in, in two years, I think it was five years or something. I'm not sure that, how long. But they were all eliminated and so they didn't collect that millage anymore. You know, and, and I don't know, was, was there any questions about that? I mean, basically, he talked about senior services millage being reduced and it going to court and they see. And then the court ended up saying in the end, if they wanted to challenge the reduction, it needed to go to tax tribunal.
Yeah, and let me just say, and Mr. Stoker actually called me late yesterday afternoon, actually in the evening, just to clarify one point, which is not pertinent to us. The board does have the legal authority to cut the millage rate unless there's approved budget for the upcoming year. So, uh, if there was approved budget for 2022 that this board approved, then you could not cut the millage rate lower than that approved budget. But because, and I've got copies, because our contract expires on December 31st of 2021. And you, and since you have not approved a budget for this program beyond December 31st of 2021, then you do have the legal requirement. You want to clarify that because sometimes with contracts, with agencies, it's a two or three-year contract that includes the budgets in there. That's not the case with this one. So he just wanted to clarify that.
Right. And I did ask the, um, the administrator to give us each a copy of that contract so we have a chance to look at it for next Tuesday's meeting.
And Mr. Stoker will put his opinion in writing. But it was, uh, it was Mr. Wessel, Mr. Bunnock, Michelle Crocker and I with David Stoker. The paper this morning said Michelle Klein. It was the wrong Michelle that covered the paper. So you were not part of that.
No, I was not. Nope.
Commissioner Allen, go ahead.
Thank you very much for coming back and, um, telling us about how the program's progressing since you just were able to get started in June. Um, it sounds like you're helping a lot of young parents. Well, maybe I shouldn't just say young. I, I don't want to.
That's true. Parents. Parents are caregivers. Yeah.
Parents. I, you know, I'm, I'm projecting my own stuff on that one. I was a young parent. Well, not really young, but, um. I want to comment on the value. Um, Sue Miller mentioned the dearth of mental health services in Lelandau County. And that is absolutely true. You have to go to Traverse City. There are long, long waiting lists. Um, when you have babies, just getting there, finding babysitters, um, all of that is difficult. And young, I, I assume all of you remember being a new, new parent. It's scary. You're terrified the first one's going to die if they pick up. Um, lots and lots and lots of questions. I know I would have, I lived in Traverse City at the time. Boy, did I need help. And there wasn't anything I knew about. I really, really would have benefited. Um, and having that kind of support early, verified by studies, but it is going to contribute to later success in life. So fewer people need substance abuse services if some of these issues are addressed between one and five. That's verified. Um, more success in school. Our voters voted for this kind of support for the families of this county. They cared enough to vote for this kind of support. We may legally have the right to change a millage. The reason just given was because the program doesn't need the money or isn't working. Well, they just got started. And they're off to a really good, healthy start. So that's not, that part of the reason for us is invalid. But legally, we can do it. I think we have to think about the ethics of doing that. And what we're saying to Lelandau voters, you can have an election. Go for it. We may or may not listen. Screw you, is what we're saying. You don't count. You're wrong. We don't value your opinion. I bet a whole lot of the voters were young families. I think it's a very reasonable use of our funds. It's not our funds. We're collecting it from the people who said yes, please. Um, so nullifying a public vote is something I believe we all need to think very, very seriously about. What message does that send to our voters?
Can I, can I just throw out there, um, as well, when I think about this kind of, uh, the kind of work we're doing here? You know, we have little short-term goals. We have a family that says, oh, thank you, you know, you kept me breastfeeding or you're giving me support. But this was a five-year millage. And in our minds, what we want to be able to bring to the table in five years or four years is more of the long-term impact. It's really looking at some of these assessments that we're doing for things like parental stress and depression and anxiety and the things that we know impact our families. Um, and what is that difference for families that are involved with Parenting Communities over, you know, two years and three years? That will give us a much better, um, idea of, in Lelandau County with our families, we've invested this much money and then we can count those people that are smarter than me that know how to do that actuarial stuff, that can calculate return on investment, can come back and say, you know, this is what we've invested in. This is what we anticipate this is going to save over the course of, you know, many years in the county. So, so we, we, we just really want a chance to truly implement the vision.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess, I'd like, I'm glad you brought up ethics because, I mean, this program, and I think, um, Ms. Miller really brought it to the forefront about here on four to three votes. This program was put, was brought into existence on a special meeting. We didn't get a week to think about it and it was put through on a four-three vote. And, and then, then went to the people and, and, and Mr. Wessel actually brought this up. 83% of the people voted no or didn't vote at all for this program. 83% of the voters. So I think that's a very good point to put out.
Your words out of my mouth.
Exactly.
And 83% of the people voted yes or didn't vote.
Uh, I believe the chairman has the floor.
Yes. And, you know, so, so I, you know, I, I just want to let you know that, you know, when we're talking about four to three votes, it's, it's a terrible thing to, to do that, to force it on to the people in that way. So, so that's what he's saying. Seven, only 17% of the voters voted for this program. I have been getting tremendous pressure that this is, was snuck up and, and it was a hidden vote. I've had that said many times to me because it was put in off-year and it was put at a time during the, when, when people didn't even really know about it. I know you, you did as good a process of identifying and letting people know as you could. And I appreciate that. You know, then when it was being instituted, it was pointed out by Commissioner Lotner, I believe, that, that our senior services has 8,000 constituents and their, their budget's $900,000. The, the early childhood is 1,000 constituents and they get $700,000. It's extremely out of proportion. You know, if, if we do this to zero, we're trying to bring it back to the, to the proportion that it should be for the number of people that it's serving. You know, we asked them to compromise. We said, you don't need to put all that millage in. It, it's, it's too much money for the number of people. I mean, when you talk about the families now, if you include all 64 families, that's over $11,000 per family. If you go to the 30, whatever it is that you are visiting at this time, that's $18,000 per family. Not per child that, that you're serving from zero to six, because I don't know how many are in that. That's for the whole family. So, so, I mean, this is about the community. We're trying, I'm trying to represent the community. I mean, they were totally neglected when it came to how this was instituted, how it was put in. And we asked them to compromise. I asked them to try to go out for bids to see what it would be. They refused to do that. They had the four votes. They put it in to the health department. You know, Commissioner Lotner said, the health, to the health department, you should do these as contracted employees because this could change with one vote, you know, and, and, but you didn't want to do that, which, I mean, that's your choice. And, and I, I respect that.
Can I respond to that? I'll wait till you.
Yeah, but usually, usually we get over a 60% vote. Sometimes as high as 72% turnout of voters. Here we had 32%. You know, so it's, it's less than half of who usually vote on items. And, and I think that was done intentionally. And that's where the ethics come into this. That this whole thing was set up to intentionally get the educational vote and, and neglect the people. So, I mean, we, we, I think, you know, at least myself, Commissioner Lotner, tried to compromise with how this should be implemented, how it should start out. And so I think reducing it this year gets it somewhere to where it should have started by, by putting the millage in half for at least these two years. And that's, so that, that's the part of the reasons behind why I think that we're trying to do what the people want. And when they say 50% on almost any issue, that's exactly right. And, and I think that, that this is what we're trying to do is a compromise here.
So, and I would say, um, I appreciate where you're coming from and, and the, the goal to, you know, protect the tax dollars of, of our community. Absolutely. Um, and, you know, as a public health agency, we're a service agency and we're not, we're totally apolitical. That's not part of what we do. Um, we're about saving families. So I, and I understand that is, it is a lot of money. Um, so a couple of things I would share to consider. The first is that, you know, there are efficiencies in numbers. Startup costs are always expensive. Building something new is always much more expensive. And as you serve more families, the cost per person does go down generally because you can be more efficient. So, um, and when it comes to contracted employees, we had a lot of discussion about that. Even, even our own, as a health department, taking this on in our own liability, if we have to lay off staff, then we have the unemployment and we had many discussions. But we also know, finding good quality staff, when you can't guarantee them a job after a year, um, is really challenging. And we didn't want just anybody. We want people who have the education, the experience, the passion and the drive to do this work and to really dive in. And, you know, we, we just, that really was the goal, is some sustainable funding so we could really provide quality services, not a year-by-year like a grant. So that's our perspective.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah.
I, uh, I thank you for being here and, and I, I, I shared most of my thoughts, uh, at this week's earlier meeting and Plan Two on Monday. So I'm not going to debate all the issues today. Uh, I think we're, we're, uh, I think we have an opportunity to rethink decisions made earlier this week. And I'm looking forward to Monday's meeting. I think this is, this is helpful. Um, I, I just want to remind us all that, uh, kids are expensive and kids are also our most important asset. And, uh, I, I do think there's some ethics involved. And I, 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 I do recognize all of the pre-planning, all of the work you've done. And I've seen Holly working with kids and I've stopped by the playgroups and I'm so impressed with what you're doing. So I'm looking forward to Monday's meeting when we, uh, when we get to talk again. And I was so heartwarming by, by reading in the enterprise that Mr. Robbins has contacted the enterprise and believes there's a, there's a solution. And, uh, so Monday, we're going to talk about a solution, only if you guys work.
And I will bring a more detailed budget, but if there's anything else, any other. And I will bring a more detailed budget, but if there's anything else, any other information you all would like me to bring on Monday, you know, please let me know.
Go ahead.
Okay, since I won't be here Monday, I have questions. Could you work on a plus money?
We, we're public health. We are used to, yeah, yeah, we'll, we will do what we can with what we have.
Okay. The other concern I have that you mentioned is, I mean, we're Lelandau County, what is it, over forty percent retirees here? So we don't have a lot of families. You're saying you're going to grow. So what is the projection here? I mean, we don't really have, the families aren't really moving in here because they can't afford it. So you've got to look down the road for five years on your budget, so.
Well, my response to that, um, I have, I have two responses to that. Our goal, first of all, when it comes to families, so we know there's about a thousand kids from birth to, you know, age six. Our goal is to be connected to every one of those families. And of course, at different levels. Maybe one family just gets newsletters with information, and maybe another family comes to playgroups and that's it. So we, really, we want every family to know, this is here for them. This is the support that's here for them. So we really, so really, every family, just about, or every child. And then, I'm sorry, I already lost you. What was the other?
I mean, okay.
You're, oh, the budget, the, the cost. So, and the other thing to know that, you know, as a health department and as you, every dime we spend is very closely monitored. And if we, we are estimating seven hundred and eight thousand dollars for what we would like to do for our dream for next year. Just as with this year, things happen. If we spend less, we're not, we aren't, the county's not just giving us this money. So you're paying for exactly what services are received. And therefore, if COVID continues and we can't reach this dream next year and we only need five hundred thousand, then that's all that we're going to be getting from the county. Does that, that make sense?
Forty-eight hours ago, correct, we were wrong, there's like four hundred and six thousand dollars in the budget. Now I've been told that December it's going to be gone?
Well, um, you know, I, I can just tell you what, what we anticipate is another hundred and fifty thousand that we'll need to finish out through December thirty-first for this year.
I mean, are you looking at, you have all these families that's growing, that's great. But is there a point where it's going to peak out? There's only so many kids and so many young families in this county.
There is, yeah. Well, and this, these numbers are based on serving those kids. I mean, so yes, there will be a point that it peaks out. I, I think where we're at, this is, this is new. We are just getting started. I, a year from now, if we come here in November of twenty twenty-two, I think we'll even have a much better sense of how many families, you know, are truly, is there a place where we're going to peak out? How many families truly need and want home visits? How many families truly need and want playgroups? How many other parenting education activities and things might we want to conduct? So I think we'll have an even better sense at the end of next year.
The other question I have is, someone just mentioned they grew up in Traverse City, is a young mother. I've been told Grand Traverse County budget's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. They have ninety thousand people. And they got a lot of young families there. So why are we seven hundred thousand?
I, you know, I don't know what their money is coming through or what they're exactly doing with that. I mean, I can tell you, you know, it wouldn't be as comprehensive as what we're, we're.
I want to finish. I'm not against it. I just got to make sure.
Yeah, I know. You want to understand.
We're getting a little square block.
Right, right.
Commissioner Lotner.
Well, I think that it's really interesting that all, all of a sudden, suddenly, we want to work together on this. Because Will is exactly right. This was hammered through, and we know how it was hammered through. Um, and I know health department employees back during that millage election were pushing it hard. I heard it from several people. And when I asked that at public meetings, we were told by Lisa, oh, no, 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 we're not pushing for it, we're not pushing for it. We're only there to answer questions. And I repeatedly, repeatedly heard it from people, that health department was pushing this program. Five and a half employees for this program. That's the problem. You're way administration-heavy, way administration-heavy on this program. So you, you can stop all programming and still not be able to pay for your employees. Um, I, I, how many assessment surveys did you put out?
Uh, we are giving them, as I said, we just started. This was our goal for the month of September. These surveys were twenty-two, I believe, just twenty-two families. And then by the end of.
How many surveys did you put together through Survey Monkey and, and put out to the public?
Are you talking about the previous survey? Are you talking about the ones that these, this came, that I'm sharing today?
Lelandau Early Childhood Millage Tax Dollars Assessment of Needs Survey. How many of those were put out?
When, you'll have to tell me, ask, I have to apologize. When was, I'm trying to understand what survey is so I can answer that. The Early Childhood Millage Survey was that we did.
Survey Monkey.
We did one, we did, we did a survey as a health department that we put out there shortly after the millage was approved, so that we could get a sense. And that was put, it was on Facebook, a link on our webpage, and with our networks. And I believe in the end, it was approximately maybe fifty people that responded, if that's the initial, the initial survey.
So you're saying you've just done one assessment of needs survey?
That we have done one official assessment. Well, since the funding was approved, we've done many over the course of, you know, years of time.
I assume there was more because.
This is not new for us, yeah.
Because I heard from constituents and, and others even outside my district concerned with this, about some of the things you were asking what, what they needed. And, and, and it had asked about daycare. Do you need daycare? And, and we had asked, I asked at this table whether this was going there. And I was still, oh, no. Well, not at this time, you know? And that's my biggest concern is because there is no way, no way. And I see it in some of your literature about daycare. So that, that's a great concern.
It has never been the intent.
Intent.
I, I think, well, and as well, we know. Well, Linda, we know that it's not allowable. That was part of, when the, the initial study group, and I know Patricia can speak to this, way back when the initial study group was put together to look at early childhood in the county, and they came up with recommendations, daycare was of course, part of that amongst many other things. And then they had, there are certain things that can be funded with the millage and certain things that cannot. We know daycare can't be funded with the millage. And that's not, it's a public health department.
So to finish my comments, to clarify this up, is that I, I have heard from, from a great number of young parents that, that are not interested in any of this to do with, with the health department. So you're never going to get all the families in the county. I know that. We, we had offered that you could, as a health department, if you were pushing it this hard during that millage time, we could have funded you with more dollars out of our budgets for something we could control where it went and how many employees there were. But you weren't interested in that. You had to push forward with your own millage up to rate. You know, and as Will said, with our seniors, even our seniors are lit, tested. And for a lot of these, you know, ideas to be for just the wealthiest in our county, who might want to, you know, get together for playdates or whatever, or whatever services, is, is a great concern for me. I know that I've been told by young parents that there are more playgroups available out there in this county than they could ever possibly attend. There are more playgroups, there are more parent groups. There, there are many, many, many of our young, young families are, are, already feel so connected. And they've said they're just not interested. So, um. Yeah, I could go on and on.
I know, we have, we've worked with so many families. We don't, you know, and I want to be clear too. Again, as a public health department, we're a public service agency. This millage is not our millage. This is not, we are not, you know.
It became your millage when you began to push for it during these elections.
We were tasked with this, but we weren't out there.
Pushed for the contract for it.
We, we are, we support. We are supportive of early childhood services because we know the data.
And there are many out there.
And we understand the value.
There are many, many listed in your service, survey are already available.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is crossing the line. We have a presenter.
I do not. I have the floor, as a matter of fact.
She does.
I'm calling a point of order. I think we have, we need to be respectful to our presenter. We're throwing out some things.
Well, and I think we're getting off budget topic, you know? But I, I do think that Commissioner Lotner has the floor.
Let's be respectful.
Yes, and.
Let's, let's be honest. And let's be respectful to each other also.
Ms. Klein should not argue with her while she has the floor.
Thank you. I apologize.
Thank you. Will, you too.
Let's wrap it up? Yeah?
Yeah. Did you, anything about?
I, I would love to speak because I haven't had a chance yet. And address some things. Number one, the reason those questions on, do you have a car? Do you need daycare, et cetera, are on the survey is because the health department, through their parenting communities programs, works with families to get them to other organizations and services that provide these things. They do not provide it themselves. But they don't know what services they need to interact with or integrate with unless they know what families are facing. Some families don't have transportation. Some families need childcare. Some families need financial support. And there are a lot of programs out there. But it's very difficult. You heard from Sharon Vreeland say the same thing. It's very difficult for families to navigate the web of, of requirements to reach these. They don't even know where to start half the time. So the parenting community staff, what they do is they connect these families with those resources. So that's why they ask for those questions. Not that they're providing any of that themselves. And the health department, I must say, never, ever pushed for, and I have the floor now, never pushed for having this program. The reason the group of forty-two, which was comprised of businesspeople, schools, professionals, all of the different states and, and, and federal agencies that provide services to families, dentists, churches, daycare providers, St. Mary's school director, preschool director, other preschool directors, educators, principals, superintendents, I could go on and on. There were forty-two people. And they thought that to get the biggest bang for the buck, it was good to put a program in the health department because they could wrap it around all of the other services that are offered and integrated. And that's what they're doing. Amazing job of doing. So that they can go out to a home and, and not only talk about what are your needs today as a parent, but be able to offer all of the health services that many times people aren't aware of as new parents, or grandparents, or whoever is caring for that child. So that's another point that I wanted to make, but, but they were not pushing for it. They are not political. And as, as Michelle just said, this is not their millage. The staff is the service. So if you're looking at the number of staff, that is the service that is provided to families. It's not that they're sitting in an office. If there is a home visit or whatever, they're out there providing that service. You can't provide a service without staff. And when we look at the thousand kids versus the eight thousand senior services, I would say to you, how many of those senior services are actually provided to how many seniors? It's a very much smaller number. We do put the, uh, the pamphlet out and the email online to all of the seniors in this area. But because service takes time, as Michelle said, there is only so many people that can be served. So if you look at that and you take those dollars that go in the senior service millage, I would bet that you're going to come up with a very similar number per individual who's receiving service. Also, excuse me, I'm sorry. The, we keep talking about, oop, and where did I put that? There it is. The numbers of people who voted for this. And one of the things that I think you should go back and look at, for those of you who may not have, is to look at the results from the twenty nineteen survey and the registered number of voters who voted. And in many townships, it was fifty percent or very close to it. So when we throw out these average numbers, it skews the data. And you can look at who voted yes and who voted no. And in some communities, it was close, like, like District One. But District One voted, ended up voting for it by five votes. But it was very close. It lost by eight votes in the township of Elmwood. So throughout that, you're going to find, if you look at these numbers and really analyze it, instead of doing averages to use them as a club, it is helpful to see where the health department needs to grow the service, which is what they're trying to do to reach those families. The, the townships, which is six out of seven, that supported it, have, are where the families are located. The farming communities, they of course have other interests. And I, you know, I never expected that, that this millage would pass by large numbers. I was surprised how close it was in some, because most of the families are located in other areas. And finally, and then I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor. The idea of having two things, internet and quality childcare programs and services, that's what brings people to our county. Lelandau County has been blessed in the past to have an excellent record in early childhood services. And this program not only continues it, but it enhances it. What we need is to do something on our internet, we all know that. But without that, you can't attract young families. Yes, it's an expensive place to live, but we are working on all of those problems. And there are areas in our county that are less expensive to live than others. But we're not going to attract families in if they see that there is no quality early childhood program. It's integrated with health and other measures. So this is an economic issue also. So from that, I just want to say, this was a bipartisan vote. I know that people don't like to say that, when it was a vote of four over three, but it was bipartisan. And it was forty-two people from, I won't go over again, all of the people who did a spot analysis and spent almost four and a half months working very hard on this issue, looking at all of the parameters, evaluating the gaps, looking at our strengths, looking at opportunities to improve things. And they came up with this as the recommendation. It was presented, not just in one week, there were a couple of months worth of discussion. So I, I think that, you know, time tends to erode memory a little bit. And I know feelings and passion are strong on this. But I do think what we ought to do is let go of all of that and look at the program that's in front of us and say, let's give it a year. I mean, they have been three months worth of data we're looking at here, and it's amazing what they've done in those three months. If we provide enough funding for them to continue it for a year, I think we'll be sitting here next year looking at a very different program. And a very different outcome of work that's been done. The fact that they've plugged in a strong evaluation measure should say an awful lot. So based on all of this, let's, let's let go of all the arguments of what was in the past and look at this program, how it's benefiting our community, how it's integrated into other health parameters that are offered, and how it's integrated into all of the early childhood services that are being offered in this county. Because they are filling the gap. They are not duplicating. And it's, they've done an incredible amount of work to make sure that this is a quality program benefiting our families. And if it goes away now, the families that they've served, you're stopping that service. And the families on their waiting list will never have that opportunity. So with that, I'll, I'll turn the floor loose.
Commissioner Ross.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here today, sharing with us. One thing I hear is, it sounds like you think all parents are stupid. Parents don't know how to raise their own kids. This program, when implemented, was never means-tested, so that we could help those that did not have the means to help themselves. Instead, as I mentioned, the third time now, we have got seniors and other people in this county that do not have children between the age of zero and six, that are struggling. They do not see the services from this. The seniors don't see the service from this. But yet, because of that lack of means-testing, they suffer while those families who may have two-parent incomes are provided with free service. I don't know how you qualify that. Those are the people that we're hearing from. that we're hearing from. Those people don't want to pay for somebody else's kids when those people have the means to take care of their own kids. You make it sound like people are stupid, that they can't find information, that they can't find services anywhere except for right here. I tend to disagree. Let me ask you a question in regards to the, I believe you said a thousand kids in that age bracket?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And when you take the budget of $708,000, what does that equate to per child?
It's...
What's the number? Is it $70,800 per child?
Seven thousand per child?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand?
Eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Seven thousand per child.
So you've got somebody who is already in a position that needs help with kids over the age of six, could be single parents, we don't know, and they're paying for those in the other category with no means testing. I have a problem with that.
I know that.
So I think there's a lot of flaws in the way this program has been put together. And personally, I think that if this program should proceed, if, we should go back to the beginning and look at a reasonable rate, as we're trying to do here today. And we need to put this out for bids, as originally requested. We need to see, do we need a staff of this size, additional staff of this size? I mean, I don't think we did it right from the beginning. And that's always been my complaint.
I would like us to get to page 33 of 78 in special funds.
I, you called on me and then you...
I will, but I want us to get back to the budget, which is what we're hearing.
I need to, I need to, I need to make a statement on this.
Fine, but I do want us to go to page 33 of 78 on the special funds. Just so, this is what we're talking about in our budget.
Do I have the floor now?
Yes.
You do. This is the budget meeting. So we're going to debate the merits of this program and talk about the merits of this program on Monday at our special meeting. And I wanted to remind us of that. Please know that some of the comments that were made today at this table don't represent the Board of Commissioners.
Of course.
They represent individual views. We understand that the millage was a Board of Commissioners millage voted on by the county residents, despite the fact that we had three commissioners actively working against that, that millage passed. We're not going to talk about this now because of the millage, I'm in a budget discussion, but I apologize for the way you were treated today. I apologize.
Thank you. No apology needed.
I thought you did a great job.
We're here to, I mean, I'm here simply to address concerns, answer questions.
Right. Commissioner Robyn, do you?
I'm going to go on a limb here. You know, I wasn't here in 19, and I'm here today. And I'm kind of in the middle here because I'm looking at your side, I'm looking at your side. And what I see is a lot of emotions that's carried over for two years. And we need to put those emotions aside, both sides, and come up with a plan here. Yes, we do have a problem here, and it needs to be tweaked. It doesn't mean that we have to get rid of it, but it needs to be revamped and come up with the right solutions for the taxpayers.
I would agree. Yes, Commissioner.
I have a couple of comments based on what's been said. Commissioner Lautner mentioned the passion of people. As a healthcare professional, I just want to tell you that people who go into those fields don't go into it because they're going to get rich or make a lot of money. They do it because of their passion for care, for their passion for help, their passion for the well-being of people. So yep, we're passionate. That's just who we are. Means testing has nothing to do with a young mother's questions. It doesn't matter how much money you have. If you can't breastfeed your baby, that has nothing to do with money. As far as the limited number of kids, kids do keep being born on a regular basis, so I think we don't have to worry about that number going down too much. I just did a quick Google, excuse me, a quick Google on percentage of, I just said, what was, how many voters, what was the percentage of voters in the Leland Village, School Village? And I quick found one article. It was the Record Eagle celebrating 38% because last year it was only 23. That's what people, that's what these kind of millages get. You know, we're lucky to get 50% voting for a presidential election in this country. So millages don't. And so what you're kind of saying is, if we only get 23% of people voting for a school millage, we could overturn that. That's scary. Really dangerous precedent. We have to walk that one very carefully. How much are our people going to trust us? As far as being out for bids, that's a waste of money. They've spent months planning for this thing. You're going to ask, you're going to throw that money away and start all over with somebody else? That's financially really irresponsible. The people of our county voted, provide a service for young families in their wisdom. We need to honor those families. Not saying we don't have to take perhaps a look, but we need to honor that vote. We have to think really carefully about what we're saying. Not only what we're doing, but what we're telling people.
Mr. Robyn.
Glenn, I wish you were listening to me five seconds ago. When is the mud going to stop flinging back and forth? I'm not going to be here Monday, so I'm asking the six of you, put your heads together, come up with a plan. So when I come in here Tuesday, there's a good plan that we can present to taxpayers and vote on. And so this mudsling, we don't, I don't care about what happened, or two years ago or whatever. I care about what's happening today and the future of this program. And when the mud stops swinging on both sides, we can move forward.
Commissioner Sloss.
I agree. In fact, that's what I was trying to do. If we look at what our chairman was trying to get us to look at, is the revenue expense report that was distributed yesterday. It shows that there's 600 and, or excuse me, $406,207.06. And we've just heard Michelle indicate that they're going to need another 150 to carry through to December at the rate they're doing, including hiring. Does that include hiring the person you need now?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, my question first is to Jen, is that the right number we're working with, 406?
Correct. So yesterday, after the budget meeting on Tuesday, and so I'm getting wrapped up in my days. So after Tuesday, I went ahead and looked because when you're looking at these numbers on that page, if you go to that first line where it says current taxes, and then it said tax adjustments, after we left the meeting, I had spoken with Darcy about talking about deferred revenue, and I thought, it just seemed like a large difference because the millage that was proposed was for 728. So when I talked on Tuesday, we talked about how Treasurer Gallagher has had, where he'd like to see the delinquent go in that line number just down from that. So 402003 is the tax adjustments. So I did some investigating yesterday and found that it was just a data entry error from the Treasurer's office on paperwork coming to the accounting where the money went. So it inadvertently was moved to recycling instead of early childhood. So the updated figures for the prior year tax adjustment, there is 50,000, let me find my number, 50,88160, that will be moved from the recycling fund out to early childhood. It'll be dated August 31st, so when we run our new figures, that will correlate. So the new number you're working for, as of today, is 45710562. So if we subtract the estimation of costs that is projected to get us till 2021, the paperwork Michelle provided is 182,792 will be the next set of bills. That will leave you to carry forward for 2022, 274,313. According to my math, if the presentation and the contract was to be fulfilled as projected, you would millage for around 435,000.
That's right. Mr. Chairman, I know I still have the floor.
That sound good?
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Okay, it sounded good.
So basically, you know, the amount that they are, the health department is asking for, for next year to do everything they would like to do, which means grow the program, continue to serve the families, is 708,000. So is that the number you took from what was?
Yes, the number that she provided.
Which is 708,000?
Yes.
You took. So basically, that means we need to put, in terms of millage, how much?
If you're looking to fulfill the proposed budget for 2022, you would need to millage for 435. It comes out to 433,686 and some change. So I'm saying 435,000 is the difference between what's projected to be spent and the budget.
And this will be a good time to look at this memo from Andrew to me that I passed out. I thought this would be helpful for all of you. It simply outlines what one mill is equated in real economy, what one tenth of a mill is, what one one hundredth of a mill is. So if you're looking at millage rate, I thought that would be helpful.
And so that's what, my next question is, is what does that translate to, 435,000 into mills? Because that's what we should be looking at.
Right. But first, we should decide on the budget before we start figuring out the millage.
I'm sorry?
We should probably first decide on the budget, if we're going to allow a budget, before we worry about the millage. Because when I look at this, 274,000, and this is what I had figured, that's more than enough for a year. If you're going to go 125 or 150,000 a year, you know, which would be equivalent of what Commissioner Robyn said Traverse City has, then we have enough for at least almost two years here that would be left over.
Mr. Chairman?
Without adding any more millage.
What are you basing that amount on? I mean, it's...
I'm just basing it on what he said, that Traverse City does.
Well, so it doesn't have any relationship to this program? It's what Traverse City does?
It's an early childhood program.
But what early childhood program? There's a number of them in Traverse City, and I'm pretty familiar with them.
Well, I mean, we have a number of them here.
The what?
The one that county touches.
And I...
I got to research it. That's what I've been following.
Yeah, that's, so that's what I'm saying. Before we start going and figuring out the millage, I already think, and that's why I was willing to go to zero, because I believe there's enough money in there for the program as it's being used right now.
No, there isn't. They will not be able to go a full year.
I think it goes under 1,800, and I...
They will not be able to go a full year based on what they're doing right now.
Yeah, even if you look at what we spent this year, which was really a lower year because of COVID and not doing as many activities.
And not starting until June.
Right, right. So we're still talking 350,000 to not provide, you know, full services as we got.
So then would we talk about $75,000 in millage, if we were to go with that? Okay, so whatever amount you put in the budget, between Jen, I, and Andrew, we'll come up with the millage rate to equate that. Whatever, the majority of you, whatever you agree to put in the 22 budget, we will come up with the exact millage rate, if there's agreement on what the budget should be.
But the 75,000, I think what we need is for Michelle to give us a really good number.
I will. And I will by Monday. I'll come with a detailed budget and, you know...
If you could, get that to me in advance, we can give it up to the Commissioners before Monday.
We'll work on it this afternoon.
If you can.
Yeah, we'll work on that this afternoon.
Whatever you could, email it to me and I'll forward it to all the Commissioners.
Okay, okay. I will. And I'll really look at, you know, in detail, how many projected home businesses, the time it takes for each one, and all the way we calculate stuff. So I'll share that with you.
Commissioner West.
Thank you. And I like, I like that. I was getting nervous as we were throwing out numbers and thinking that, I mean, we've had a committee of 42 people spending a year and a half on this. We need to make this a thoughtful process. So I was hoping that we would ask her to come back with a budget, that you've heard some concerns. What do we need to deliver a program that the voters have voted for, at a level that everybody can support? And I think that's what we're going to do on Monday, right?
That's what I hope we can do. Yes. Commissioner Ross.
I would also like to break down on the cost of your administrative services across the board. Administrative, you've got six...
Yeah, our indirect costs and that kind of thing is what you're talking about?
I would like that broken out for your social workers, your supervisors, your county coordinator, your administrative assistant, and your biller.
You'll do.
Yep. So we see just exactly, you had mentioned that first-year startup costs are higher. Did you not just say that to this board?
I did, yeah.
So I also heard you say, your numbers aren't quite where you want them to be, but you think it's important to hire right now that last person?
Well, right, well, right now, we had planned going into this year, we thought we would have hired more staff well before now, in fact, but obviously couldn't. So right now, the staff that we have, they're tapped out for time. And so they really can't take on many more families to do home visits for. They can't take on some of these extra activities that, you know, folks in the community have wanted. So that's why we're looking right now at, you know, now is the time when we needed to hire. We didn't need to hire an extra person six months ago. We just didn't need that.
So with the dream program that you have, how many more employees do you think that you're going to need over time?
I think that I would, you know, we might be okay with that. It really would depend again on if we, if we go into 2023.
You have a thousand kids.
Yeah.
You have a thousand kids.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking the question. How much more staff do you think you need to serve?
Over the next five years, is what you're looking at?
Exactly.
Yeah.
What's your staff limits?
I, well, gosh, that's a great question.
And then what's your cost?
I will, I'm going to bring that, I will, let me calculate those out, and I'll make sure that I have those to share with you. Okay. We did do some of this way back when we initially planned, so I'll pull all that data out so we have that for you.
Any other questions or statements?
I have one more question. I wanted to know if Ms. Klein wore her, was it asbestos pants for the board today?
Asbestos pants.
Because she's been on the hot seat.
I believe it was our prosecutor who mentioned that he came before the board with asbestos pants. So I'm just wondering if you wore your asbestos pants today?
No need. You know, my perspective on all of this, it's not easy because I know there are so many different opinions and thoughts, and strong opinions and thoughts. But my perspective is, I'm here to answer your questions and address concerns. And we may not agree always, but, you know, I just want to do the best I can to answer your concerns.
And we appreciate that here, contrary to what my fellow Commissioners believe. We do appreciate what you do for the community, and we appreciate the work that you do. So you have a great day.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, you all know where to find me if you have other questions.
I'm sorry, you want a break?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay.
Not very much longer.
Yeah, we're only going to go 21 minutes here. So thank you. Well, we'll be done here, I think, in about five minutes.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you all.
I mean, did you understand this budget for the early childhood will be dependent on what we decide, you know, so that these numbers will probably change. on what we decide, you know, so that these numbers will probably change what millage we're going to decide that we will.
Yeah, you'll need one more meeting.
Yes.
And can I suggest how we decide on that? I think we need to cease talking about whether or not elections are valid. I'd, let's just talk about a program and what we need to run.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, so then are there any other commissioner topics?
I just have a couple of updates on topics that were discussed in the past. On the Parks and Recs and their structure and funding, I talked to David Stoker last night, and they are a commission. This board chose to make them a commission and therefore they're independent, just like the Brownfield Land Bank, so therefore the clerk's office is not responsible for their minutes. However, that means they could do it, they could be charged back, that'd be a legitimate expense from the Parks and Recs budget, but because of the choice the commission made to make them a commission versus a committee, there's no legal responsibility for the clerk's office to take.
Okay, I'm glad you checked on that, because you thought it fell under the clerk as her responsibilities.
Every other sub-group does, but because the board and, I think that when you approve, when you apply for the Veronica Valley funding, you have to have a commission in place, so that's, that's why. So just like Brownfield Land Bank, Trudy actually covers those and not the clerk's office. Every other function in their county is the clerk's responsibility. So, and then in terms of a stipend for, let's say Laurel or someone, that's legal, you have to be careful with labor laws, with hourly employees. So if you do decide to do a stipend, at some point I'll make a recommendation, it is recommended to give a stipend either once or twice a year, not on a weekly, every week payroll basis. Because these are, if it is an hourly employee, if it's a salary employee, that's a different thing. But you can't come by hourly employees with extra compensation unless you do it in a way that it's only once or twice a year. You don't want to do it every pay period.
Yeah, like, I remember like in Grand Chaffers, we gave Van Slay, he was, he was a deputy, but he was in charge of the program. They allocated him twenty five hundred dollars. He would get a check every December.
Yeah, it'd have to be a separate check once a year or twice a year, but not as a regular payroll check if it's an hourly employee. You know, you can't confuse those two. So that's just an FYI. And then, uh, I did a memo this morning on the, on the issue of the senior service director and the maintenance director, and I want to say this is completely separate from what April presented. April's request was to put at the same rate as other department has, which was about seventy some thousand dollars. This is completely separate, looking just at the positions, and if you look, I think we do have a legitimate structural error when, uh, the starting pay for the senior service director and the maintenance director are about the same. Senior services actually gets a little bit more, but the end of the four-year period, you can see there's a substantial gap the other way. And so I did a map, it's on the front page here, the maintenance director position increases five percent a year, every year. The senior services was three point six percent. So there's a gap. This is the only two that I think is a fair comparison. Uh, at some point you will get a revised proposal here, but, uh, this is probably the most glaring and the biggest structural challenge in this position. So if, this is not related to April's request, which you make a decision on, but, uh, what I propose is simply taking the starting pay scale vote and applying the same percentage increase to them to get the numbers that are listed on the front page.
I thought we were going to look at all of these.
You can, I'll just bring this up.
I, I would like to do that all at the same time.
That, that, that's up to some of you.
Well, I, I guess my, my person, I was hoping the administrator would go through it and come and present something to us, and then we can look at it and decide if we wanted to.
I didn't want to touch them at all, so there you go. I mean, this one may be logical because I, nobody wants to hear any history on it, so, um, moving forward, that might be a little bit different, but I don't think we want to start touching them. Honestly, no.
Michelle Elgaier.
I am very glad that you did this. People know when their pays, when their pay is not in sync with everyone else's, that's just basic fairness in life. So I think it's, we want our employees to trust that we value them equally, so I appreciate you doing this. Can, can we put this on the October? How soon, how soon could we do this?
I will, if you wish, I could attempt, I'll work with Jen and come up with a complete revised proposal by October. I'm saying we can attempt to do that, I can't guarantee it.
Do we have consensus that everybody wants to, you know, yeah, I didn't know if you want to, do you want to go person by person to see, do you want to do the whole thing or you just want to do April now and then make it a study for later?
Some of the commissioners asked me to look at this position, that's why I did this position first. We are looking long-term at the whole pay scale. It will be done this year. When everything else has to be done by October, I, I can't, I, I just don't want to guarantee someone that, because we don't want to rush into this.
I get, I totally get that, because you've got a lot on your plate for October. So if we addressed this one right now, what we, we have the figures, you've done the work, we know the inequity, um, why wouldn't we fix this now? I think it's, it's important for our employees that when we are aware of an inequity, that we attempt to fix it in honoring their work. That affects morale and it's about our integrity. So I would move, uh, to recommend that the board of commissioners.
This is a budget session?
I know, so that's why I'm recommending.
Okay. Very good, yeah, that's good, you're right.
Yes, my chairman told me to say that.
We have one more budget meeting on the twenty third, is that budget? I don't have.
No, we don't have any other budget meetings.
No, no, we don't have any other ones scheduled.
It's the last one.
Yes, I'm moving to recommend that we repair this.
Sorry.
So it's recommended to place in the budget, and then do you want to vote or, or do you want to?
Yes, yes.
I'd like a chance to talk to it before.
Yeah, did someone second it?
I'll second.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. And you want to speak to it, go ahead.
I, I do, because I don't think we fixed the problem by making sure that the senior services director is at the same rate as the maintenance director. I think we need to look at qualifications and educational levels, and, and I don't think it fixes the problem by just looking at these two highlighted lines and making sure those two positions are at the same level throughout. I, uh, we may disagree with what, what the senior services director asked for in terms of an adjustment, but there is an inequity, and she has a master's degree and lots of years of experience, and she is, uh, she is the lowest paid person in, in that, in that category. I think we need to look at that, and I don't want to just adjust it to the maintenance. If we had a facilities director, but as far as I know, we're not requiring that the maintenance director have any specific educational background or training, and, and so I think there's an inequity we need to adjust before we say it's fixed.
Commissioner Ross.
I, um, it's, you know, I agree that it's supposed, you know, we should look at it, but, uh, you know, um, we got, we're going to the contracts too, and I don't know if that's a good thing right now, um, to be giving everybody a raise until the contracts are settled.
These are sounding.
Yeah, I understand the master's thing, uh, our facilities director, he could have, or he or she could have a master's degree. I mean, we got a, if you go on a master's degree, we got a dog catcher that has a master's degree, should we put him up to that day? You know, so, I mean, we, we need to look at it, but I don't think now's the time. We need to get through budget and get through contracts, and we need to sit down and, yeah, it is not fair for April to be down here and someone up here, but I think, you know, that's down the road here.
I'm just clarifying, this was nothing to do with classifications or value, strictly was a structural error. And that's a whole discussion you probably should have, and maybe when we come up and revise schedules, you should have that discussion, but this is strictly based on what the starting pay was for those two positions and based what happened for some reason with the next four-year pay scale.
We talked about the difficulty in hiring, uh, even at the, uh, lower positions within the county. I really think that we need to look at this overall, um, in a study work session of some sort so that we can work through some of these issues that we're hearing about, being able to hire people, not finding people, they don't want to work for the amount of money and, uh, making, uh, some considerations for all of our employees. So that's where I'm at on that.
Well, I guess if you, depending on how you choose, we will put it on the October agenda. If we have a proposal, great, if we don't, we at least give you an update and keep working on it. But there's a lot of epilysises here on what should occur, which I, we know that's going to happen. But this is probably the most glaring of the challenges with that current pay scale, and, uh, as I understand, the, uh, history is pretty murky how it kept that way, and I'll just leave it at that.
And I, Mr. Chair, and I don't disagree with that, except my only hesitation is that I don't want us to think we've solved the problem. This, uh, this make, this adjustment is an adjustment that we ought to make, but we haven't solved the problem. And I agree with what David said, we ought to look at it. I hope that means we'll look at it by the end of the year and not too far down into the future.
Okay, thank you. Was there any other?
No, that, uh, I, I must have another question.
That's okay, even though there's a motion, do we want to?
Yeah, so it, I mean.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
What was the motion?
It was basically to look at the, the.
It was to implement, it was the, the motion is to implement this pay scale for the 2022 budget for the senior services director. And then from there, Chat would come back with a total group for the second page, which is every other else.
Is that part of the motion?
No.
No, no, that's, the motion was just that, but then it was later discussed that he and I would need to, which.
The motion is to fix it today?
Yes, for the 2022 budget.
Okay.
So I can budget it.
Commissioner Soderstrom.
That, that's what I was going to say, to just fix it for the twenty, for the 2022 budget so that Jen can get it in, and then we, I agree, we should look at all of the situations and take into consideration, but this was a structural error.
We're going to look at that before the end of the year, can the budget be adjusted at that time?
Uh, it wouldn't be adjusted until, when I'm working in 2022. It'd have to be by board motion for her, if there was to be.
Okay, so if we made a board motion in, say, January after we revisited this, because there might be more than one, that needs to be adjusted, then can the budget be adjusted at the first of the year by board vote?
So there's two things that I can think of right there, so that you've got going. First, your annual adjustment to the whole scale is typically done after your contracts are negotiated. So that's done by board motion. And then that sets the pay scales for them to be paid on January, whatever it is, six, yeah, for, uh, 2022. Then if you revisit the scale, that would be by separate board motion, and when you chose to implement those wages, typically, I don't know if you go retroactive.
And they can be, and they can be made retroactive. So we can't adjust the budget.
Certainly can.
So we can't adjust the budget, we don't need to make that decision today. We're pretty busy in October, but it is something that we should look at before the end of the year, so I'm going to vote no on your motion today.
Well, my, my question is, will this change her pay at this time if we pass this down?
No, it will change it for January at 2022.
January first.
It, it wouldn't be a stipend, it wouldn't be a makeup, it's, that's what gets budgeted, and then her salary for 2022 moves to sixty four. It doesn't go back, it doesn't pay the difference.
Because she'd been a four-year scale.
That would be her new pay scale, that's her budget. From there, then you would make changes if you wanted.
But she's been here eight years, so I wouldn't think the four-year scale would affect her pay at all.
Yes, that's what we use for everyone. So, so like in this case, anybody that's here at four-year that's topped, when you implement your non-union by board motion, those numbers all facilitate and change, and then that's the new rate of the end.
It's four plus years that she's, it's anyone older four years.
So this doesn't always stay the same, this keeps going every time we make a percentage adjustment.
Yes, that's why I was stating if you implemented this.
Yeah, it changes every year.
Right.
I did.
Then you would change again by board motion after contract.
So we're not talking about what increase people will get, we're talking about the difference in each step, year one, year two, year three, year four, that's the issue.
Yes.
Yeah. If you, whatever percentage you agree to compensate non-union employees will adjust the entire scale. We adjust the scale every year.
Yes, we adjust the scale each, each, each year.
But it's a step from year to year that has not been adjusted, that's the problem. They're, they're two separate issues.
Yes.
I, I think that answers your question.
Yeah, it does now. So everybody understands this now, all right? So I, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Aye.
Aye. I, I think we need a roll call over here, because I'm not sure.
So this is just to make this adjustment now, and then we will look at the whole thing later.
So we're going to carve out.
This one glaring.
This one and give her the raise effective when?
One, one.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, January first, 2022.
And does she get reac, uh, retroactive pay from today forward?
No.
Okay.
It's in, you're, you're changing the step in what's been proposed, just like when this comes back, like Chat said, there will be a note on Tristan. Okay, so we have Glenn that made the motion, so Commissioner Elgaier.
Yes.
Chairman Bonnick?
No.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, I hesitated because it's, the, the.
It passes five to two.
Yes.
Right, but the sixty four, it will be the same as the maintenance directors, so the maintenance director's already at.
The maintenance will stay with the same where he's at.
Yeah, it's going to be more than.
Oh, it's just slightly more.
The maintenance director's sixty three, seven forty.
Okay. Be the two or three percent, whatever.
Yes.
Two or three percent there.
On top of that.
So it's, it's correcting an error. I think that's.
And Jen, I will attempt, we'll put it on the October agenda for sure, we'll at least give you an update if we don't have a proposal.
Any guests, Commissioner?
Before we go to public comment, whenever we're down here, we did have a request that since we're voting at this meeting and Monday thing, I think it's critical that we support Tony Rantin for Misha Director, and maybe we could take a vote and then have the chair sign the letter, because he's, uh, that decision's going to be made before our business meeting next week. And we haven't had a, a Northern Michigan person in charge of Misha for a long time, and Tony would be good, and, and the Housing Action Committee has endorsed that, but I believe that Melinda could speak to this, I believe it would help if the Board of Commissioners supported this candidacy.
So Lois was supposed to talk to you after the meeting and find out what, um, steps we could do today since this was just a work session?
She did not, I was not aware of this.
Were you supposed to have the chat? You and Lois, we're supposed to talk to Chat and see, could, what can we do today as a commission, just by consensus, say?
Right. It'll take you a minute.
Well, uh, Mr. Bonnick, I guess do you, if you feel comfortable, you could sign it as an individual. To sign on behalf of the board, you need board action.
Right, that would have to go Tuesday. We'd have to put it on the agenda for Tuesday to be board action.
If it's on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, each of you as individuals could write a letter of recommendation.
So, is Tuesday soon enough?
No.
That's why we just took Board action.
I would say, if you signed it on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and sent it